And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions we give to my councilman, councilmember Gontz?
Bow your head please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each person represented in this. Lord, we just ask that you help us make good decisions for our community, to help our community grow and move forward. Be with each one of us and each thing we say, in Christ's name. Amen.
Benel?
Present.
Gontz?
Yes ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Here.
Kirkpatrick?
Lowry?
Present.
Neal?
Norris?
Here.
Trig?
Witcher?
You have before you the minutes of the last meeting, June 14th, 2021. Hearing no additions, deletions, or corrections, I'll take a motion to accept them.
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Benel. Second by Councilman Kirkpatrick. All those approved signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign disapprove. Minutes passed. First item on agenda tonight is Wes Simpson, Chairman of the Downtown Park Steering Committee, to speak to the council. And we also, I'll turn this over before Wes gets up there to the city attorney.
Ladies and gentlemen, when Wes sent me the materials to go over for the proposal and the bids, all total about eighty pages of very professional work in an area that I knew very little about. As I studied through that and was trying to learn rapidly, I contacted the Kentucky League of Cities for assistance, which is what we're instructed to do, and had some conversations with them, and then also the mayor and Chris Johnson at Kentucky League of Cities had phone conferences. And at that time, Chris Johnson referred us to a leading attorney in Kentucky named Jason Halligan, who is with Frost, Brown, and Todd. He is out of their Lexington office. They're a premier law firm, and Jason has been working on private-public partnerships across the state of Kentucky and is endeavoring to become an authority in that area if he's not already the best that Kentucky has. He finished a public-private partnership in Brandonburg this past April, where they were able to produce upgrade to their infrastructure that allowed a process to come in for Nucor, which couldn't have been done if they had waited for public money to be appropriated. He's also working on additional public-private partnerships, one of which involves for sales, which he may share with you this evening, at least some of that information, because they are interested in doing an amphitheater. We did not have a conversation with Jason until last Friday morning. That was the first occasion. And he was, as you would expect, quite busy and was expected to be out of his office most of the day today. But he was gracious enough to talk with us. And I misunderstood that he would be here tonight, and told some people, including Chastity, that he would be here. But he is going to be with us on Zoom due to scheduling requirements. He could not be here in person. But his credentials are impeccable. I've had a pleasure of talking with him on Friday and today on multiple occasions. He's with us on Zoom, and he will be hearing Wes's presentation. He may have a question for Wes or two, or Wes may have some for him. And after Wes's presentation, the council and the committee can ask Jason questions as long as they want. We have not hired him for this project. We have made arrangements with him to be a consultant through this evening's meeting. If the council decides to go forward, he and Kentucky League of Cities and myself included have recommended that you have someone who is familiar with private-public partnerships so we can set up the right structure, if this is going forward, so that we can have the right structure to do it legally and make sure that we keep our i's dotted and our t's crossed. I think he's a good one, but this council could hire any person that they so chose to do that. I can admit wholeheartedly that I'm not qualified to do what needs to be done as I've looked at it, and I just don't quite have the horsepower to do that. So, I'll answer any questions anybody has for me, but I think your better questions would be probably for Wes and for Mr. Halligan. And I'll let Wes go ahead now with that background so that he understands, you know, what's going on and that it's not something to keep him from doing what he wants to do, but something to assist in doing it properly if the council decides to do that.
All right, we're gonna try this again. I was here a couple of weeks ago. So, I definitely have a question. I want to hear my part for Mr. Halligan in that. I think the term "public-private partnership" has been tossed around in a P3, which the project you specified with Nucor, I understand, was a true P3 investment vehicle for private citizens to invest in government infrastructure who expect a return on that investment, which is not what we're looking at doing here. These private folks are looking at giving the city the money and not expecting anything in return but a name on the park somewhere, whether that be a playground, a splash pad, or whatever. So, I think that's probably the first question I would have for Mr. Halligan when I'm finished in the second, to make sure that we're all on the same page of what a P3 versus a public-private agreement. What we're trying to do here is very similar to what Councilman Benel has set up with the branding for the city, the new logo and everything. And so, I want to make sure that I make that clear from the get-go. So, I appreciate you having me back again. I know some of you are probably really tired of seeing me in here. Not much to look at, but here I am anyways. I was here two weeks ago, and I'll try for the sake of time. I'm sure we're paying Mr. Halligan, so I want to keep it as short as I can. But just rehash where we're at. We've come through committees. We've come through this council multiple times on this project. We've come through groups outside of here. Sustainable Glasgow has been a part of this. And here we stand again, looking to march forward. I thought that's where we were. And, you know, I think a lot of the confusion has centered around what we did as a committee. And if I remember correctly, you know, we talked about this design-build model of an RFP a couple of times when we came in here to speak to the council. The original resolution for this park project was to allot $15,000 for design documents to then put out for bid. The committee decided, you know, we may not be able to get what we need to put out for bid for $15,000. And so, it would actually be a better deal for taxpayers if we did a design-build RFP, which is where you put out a request for proposals to design-build firms. That could be a contractor that has in-house design or a partnership between architectural firm, engineering firm, and a contractor to price and give proposals upon the design and construction. And then we could advertise that for about $2,000 and say the taxpayer's 13 grand. That was the whole goal there, to do that. And so, you know, we worked on this RFP, especially when COVID kind of started going down. We got back together as a committee, and the goal was get this RFP done so we can get this out, get some pricing. Because what we were tasked with was the resolution there to come up with working documents, a budget, a fair estimated cost, I believe is what it said, and a business plan. And so, that's what I did. And of course, to my surprise, when I sent that over, the reason I sent it over, I think I made clear in the email to the city clerk and the mayor and the city attorney was, I'm not a legal guy. You know, there's probably things in here that are not to KRS. I don't know KRS, but I want you all to look at it and put it forward, make sure that everything is good so we can get this advertising, get that committee moving forward on that fair estimate of cost. And, you know, there was a lot of crickets over that week. And then, of course, the "we'll take it from here. City Hall will handle it. Thank you for all your hard work", which felt kind of like shutting the door on the committee before we were actually finished with what we were tasked to do. And I get it, right? I mean, not everybody agrees with the project. But, you know, we have come before the council many times. And I know some people on the council don't agree. Councilman Benel, you and I have had many disagreements, but I respect your position, and I know where you stand, and you know where I stand. And I respect that, and I've had healthy debate with other council members as well. But, Mayor, you've come out in support of this park before. You know, you spoke with WNKY in December of 2019 and said that you thought it would be a great thing for downtown. It would be a boost to the city of Glasgow. And I've tried to give you the benefit of the doubt when people keep coming to me and saying that you're not really for it. You're not really for it. You're giving lip service to the project, but behind closed doors, you're trying to kill it. I have hit a lot of roadblocks every time I've come to City Hall, whether that be finances, trying to come up with ideas for how to creatively make this project happen. And then, of course, today, WBKO printed your statement. You're not for it. We can't afford it. Ten percent of people, I think the quote was, "Ten percent will use it, but ninety percent will pay for it." And so, you know, we still haven't been able to get those proposals back in to get a fair estimate of cost. So, I want to say I think we're jumping the gun here. But second, I believe the KLC, in the strategic planning sessions that went on, said this is what the community has said they want. This community has asked young people, "What do you want? What do you want to stay? What do you want to come home? What do you want here?" And the young people have come. It's not that we've come with a tantrum and said, "This is what we want. We've not done anything." We put boots to action here, and we brought money with us from generous folks who have said, "We believe in it. We want to give this money for the park." And so, with KLC saying you can't afford not to do it, you know, I have to say, I don't think you'll get this opportunity again. And like I said, it's up to this council to make the decision. And I thought we were just moving the ball forward to figure those things out, to figure out the funding and keep moving forward. But it seems like we've hit just a kind of roadblock of we're, no, we're kind of staying still. We can't afford this, which is not what this body has voted for. This body's voted to move this project forward. And so, young people have spearheaded the effort, brought money along with us, and it feels like, you know, you're saying, "This is not what you want," or "It's not what we're gonna do." You know, I think somebody told me that, you know, the number was getting thrown around, $100,000 to maintain this park. Even if it was given to us completely free and clear, we couldn't maintain it. And I think we put forward many times the options of getting creative and figuring out a way to do it. If that means Sustainable Glasgow, I think Brandy, obviously been a huge part of this, has offered up, you know, cleaning restrooms on market days, doing those things. We've talked about forming a nonprofit to help do the park. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're doing all we can to really make this a good deal. And I truly believe in the project. I believe that it will do great things for Glasgow. And so, I don't come to you with a presentation of graphics, and I think everybody's seen it. So, I think everybody's seen those documents. They've seen the work that we've done. They've seen these things. And so, I come here tonight more out of confusion of where we stand. Now, I understand there's some legal things that have to happen. I'm sure that Mr. Halligan is much more intelligent on that as I am. And I'm sure that a project of this size, that we will need some frameworks and things moving forward. But I'm having a hard time seeing where we go from here because I feel like this body has said, "Let's move forward," but City Hall is saying something else. So, that's why I come to you tonight, because I believe in this project. These folks believe in this project. The community believes in it. And the good thing is, is everybody believes in it for a different reason. Not everybody wants to see it happen for this reason, and that's it. Everybody has a part in this. And I can't believe I thought when I started this that, like, the least political thing you could ever get into was a park. Truly thought it was not a controversial. But I get it, right? We're spending money. We're doing things with city dollars, and it is something to move forward, thinking about how to maintain. But I'm telling you, the sip, shop, and stroll that was here, that if that doesn't show you the appetite for those types of things and the amount of families that were out there, our kids may have been clawing us and just acting crazy. But we want to be together. We want to be together as a community. And we want to move forward with something positive and figure out a way to get it done, which is what you said to WNKY. If we can just figure out a way to make it work. There's enough smart people in this community. We can figure out a way to make it work. And I think bringing those private dollars and looking at partnerships with community organizations is a way to do that. And so, that's why I come to you tonight. I requested to be on the agenda because I've got some big questions about where we stand on this. And will this RFP actually be advertised, and will our committee be allowed to finish the work that we started?
You want me to address the clarification of what you said about me?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I said to the radio TV station, "If it's legal, the council wants it. It's legal, and we can afford it. Fine." I don't think we can afford it. So that's what I said. I wasn't quoted totally like that. Of course, it wasn't in my voice either. But the legal part is what I told you when you called. I said, "If we're gonna do it this way, we have to have an expert to do the legal." And then, if the council wants to do it and we get the legal, then the council is who will vote for it. It's gotta go through the financial, the finance committee. And if we can afford to do it that way, if the citizens and the council wants to do that and not give raises to the sanitation workers and the police and so forth as that, fine. How many of y'all have set in on a budget?
I have.
I have.
The city's budget?
I've set on many budgets.
The city's budget?
Yes, I've set on bigger budgets than you.
Well, that's...
I qualify.
Hey, you are qualified, but tell us how. The point is, you're not in the police department or fire department who's asking us for raises. So, if the money works out and the council wants to do it, fine.
So, I'll just, I'll ask you this question then, okay? You just said that we can't afford it, and so it's one of those cart before the horse scenarios here. I'm sure you're aware, if you looked at the documents I brought the last time I came here, that we pulled out the most expensive portion of this project, in that amphitheater stage. And so, before, in that WNKY interview, you also stated, "It looks like that we could make some revenue off of this," and there was no discussion of can we afford this or not. And so, you have to sympathize with my questions of whether you are for this project or not because I can only do so much when talking with the city council. If they vote me through, I have to send an RFP through City Hall, and I don't get any sort of feedback back and saying, "We've got to go legal," and you say P3. I've told you before, P3 is not what we're doing here. We want to do donations. And so, I understand that there are legalities that have to be done here, okay? Absolutely. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a plumbing and HVAC guy. Don't want to do anything with law. However, that's separate from the fact that now it seems that you're flipping on the issue and you're putting things out in front of this community here. I mean, that like, you know, we don't want to pay, everybody wants to pay firefighters and police folks, but can you afford to keep doing things the way that you've been doing them in this community? Because it's not going to get better doing the same thing.
We've spent $2 million, that's two years ago. Mines, we've lost jobs. We have worked hard, economic development. We've got several on the hook to bring back income to the community, bring jobs to the community. It is changing. But as far as this, I don't have a problem if we can afford it. The council, who's voted, already voted. Didn't y'all vote through all the councils? You voted through the, didn't y'all already have these votes?
Hang on just a second. Let me...
You have voted on the final project, but you voted to go on through with this project and let them get priced the way the resolution was. But we couldn't go any further with the, let the attorney...
Can I ask a question, Wes?
Did we, or did we not go ahead and vote through all of those committees? Because I was at a financial committee meeting that was voted on, and other meetings that was voted on, and it passed each time. To put up the $15,000 for the design? Yeah, and he's not even asking for $15,000.
And pricing, I believe, and budget, correct?
The pricing has to be, if it's in the form of a design build or a bid, and if the city's involved, it has to be done through the city and no independent agency.
But our intention was to develop documents and obtain a budget, correct? Or was it just to develop documents?
To find a cost, find a cost, and come back for this council to see the financial aspirations if we could build.
Well, we can't do that without putting an RFP out. And if we need to label that as a budget RFP and have contractors say, "If you participate in the first round budget, when it comes back for second round," I've already had contractors reaching out.
If you're through the city, order it through the city.
I'm fine with doing it through the, yeah.
Your documentation had it going to somewhere else.
Why do you think I sent it to you? Because I'm not a lawyer. I said, "Hey, if there's anything wrong in here, fix it, okay?"
That's recent. We've got some ungood tests.
Fantastic. But I still, I still think you have to... Do we have to have, do we have to have a special attorney to send out something to kind of the RFP?
If the city's involved, it's like a bid.
I understand when it's a joint partnership, public and private monies there, it's coming together, you might need it. But why are we spending the money on that when we don't even know if we're gonna do the project yet? Surely, surely we have the expertise to put out civil RFPs for this. Have we ever put out an RFP?
ALC says if we do that, or we take bids and ask people through the city.
Well, that, nobody's arguing, nobody's arguing that it has to be through the city. I think the question, I know, but I think that's the question is, is if we're, if the project is gonna be a city project, okay? Bids are gonna go through the city. The city has put out many RFPs. Why are we paying an attorney to talk about public-private agreements, which is not even what we're doing? It's a donation, just like the thing we talked about with the community foundation, giving money to the city. I guess it just seems like, again, we can put out the RFP as a city, through the city, like has been done before, bring those proposals to our committee, let us make a decision on how we want to go about dealing with that budget and bring back a plan to this council. You have to put a construction schedule on paper to get contractors actually bidding. You have to put things in there like you're going to do the project, okay? That's what I'm saying. The paper said nothing of a P3. That's an RFP. You guys could have figured it out like has been done on other RFPs in this city. I've seen them put out for lots of different things. It just seems to me we're wasting time by saying, "We're gonna bring somebody in and talk about setting up this framework before we can even get a price from design-build contractors." It's not a joint project. I guess that's where, that's where we're getting our wires crossed, Mayor, is that this is a city project. We are funneling private funds to the city, which I can't even believe I'm saying that, to be earmarked for this project. And all these folks are asking for is their name on the park and representation when this goes through to make it work. So, I think you, I don't know if I'm not making myself, I guess...
You said the job was gonna raise $2 million. The city was gonna put up $2 million, and they were gonna do this as a private-public...
You asked me that in the finance committee meeting back in, I think it was either December of 2019 or January of 2020. What do these folks want? I said, "It's a donation. This is not wanting a return back out of this investment." And so, I feel like I've explained myself on this before, is where I'm going.
It's gonna cost you different ways. And we, as being the city, I'm responsible for the banking activities. If we do something illegal, I'm threatened to get put up the whole park. You build the whole park, and we do something inappropriate, then we're in trouble all the way around. You're not. You're a private individual. The council, that could be. And that's recent, and we've got somebody here to tell us. You tell him what you're gonna do, and if he says you can do it... Then, fine. Vote for it. You're just basically saying, "Let's help the city build the park, and we'll play for it."
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
We're not expecting return on the revenue. Not expecting to share the revenue with the profits from the venture. It's like you would have told Booth across the Howard River. This is just a public, a public project where the city is gonna put up money.
In recognition from the floor before you speak, and you're not only a Jitter Brother. I know you got a speech you want to make.
No, I don't. I'm sorry. We're all for each other, man. That's all.
You think we ought to just not have a order here? Is that what you want? That's what you're, that's what you're doing. We can clear the room if we need to. We don't have to ask you to.
Mayor Armstrong, can I speak?
Yeah, me too.
To the, my fellow council members and Wes, I would say, on January the 27th of 2020, we did pass a resolution. And my notes from that resolution was relating to the formation of a business plan, fair estimate of cost, procurement of a design, firm, and construction documents. And the overall objective was to have working plans with the study of the cost. And that's the way that I remember it. And other council members remember that. And so, we have a resolution, and I want to get information. As you mentioned, Wes, and I think everybody in this room and I and all the council know that I'm not a proponent for it, right? And I say that out front. I like it, but it's not on the priority list, okay? However, before I make a decision, the ultimate decision, because I voted with the resolution back in January of 2020 to get more information. And I think it's only fair that we get all the information. That's what we've asked of that committee. And I would like to see that more information, Wes, from that committee. And to the fellow council members, I think we've got to be fair and ask for that cost estimate, that business plan. That's what we asked for. And so, let's get that, and then we make a decision. And then your city leaders can make that decision then based on all that information. And I think it's a simple process.
I can't hear him.
Wes, I have a couple of questions, if I may. So, let me speak this in real simple terms, so maybe we can understand, okay? The document you brought, that was 81 pages long, had nothing to do with a public-private partnership. It was where to put the toilets, it was where to put the garage door, where to put the playground. Somebody was going to look at that. They were going to send us back a bid sheet that said, "This is going to cost this, and this, and this." And as Wendell and Marna and I all sat in that meeting and said, "This will bind the city to nothing. This commits the city to nothing. This allows us the opportunity to have an idea of what this is going to cost." We cut off the stage that was $1.7 million. So, that is what that document you brought here two weeks ago was supposed to do, correct?
It was to save, instead of going contracting with an architecture firm and maxing out that $15,000, just to save that money and let design-build contractors take the concepts and come back with, yes, a budget.
Another question I was asked was about bringing in the invoices for all the money we've spent on preparing for this downtown park. We've been working since 2019. Would you mind to tell the council and all of our guests here how much money we've spent on these beautiful documents and binders and 81 pages of documents?
The city of Glasgow has spent $0 on this.
Well, actually, Wes, you're wrong. The Public-Private Parks Committee has spent $0 on this. We're paying that lawyer how much an hour, Mr. Basil?
Yeah.
Mr. Basil, how much are the taxpayers paying for this consultant tonight?
We're paying this consultant $3.25 an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
Please. We're paying him $3.25 an hour under a special rate that's negotiated that reduced that considerably below his normal rate for this kind of work. And the reason for that was, in case this goes forward, so that we're doing it legally and correctly, not to keep it from going forward. So, it's an effort on the part of the city to try to assist that if it does go forward, that it's done correctly.
Well...
Now, if that's the wrong thing to do, I apologize then.
It's just my understanding, and again, I'm just a school teacher, that before we could establish a public partnership for them to give donations, we would have to actually agree to build the park, and we can't do that until we get a budget of how much it's going to cost, correct?
But if we solicit bids under the wrong pretense and under the wrong circumstances with the wrong wording, then we've got potential problems in the future.
So, he's here to talk to us about the RFP?
He's here to talk to you about whatever we're planning on doing. He's prepared for whatever questions you desire to ask.
Okay.
And with all due respect, I probably missed the train somewhere, but Mayor, you said we can't afford it. Do you even know, does anybody know how much this is going to cost?
We did a rough budget.
I mean, do we know numbers? If you want to go, put your hand on the Bible. Does anybody know what the cost is? So, how do we know if it's too expensive?
Yep.
I mean, if somebody knows, I'd love to know.
Well, we were said beginning, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 to $3.5 million is what y'all...
And I get that neighborhood, but I mean, I think all we're trying to do is figure out how much it actually costs. And then if we can't afford it, or we can't afford it, that's my position.
Well, let's hear from the attorney, see what his ideas are. He's listened patiently. May I ask one question here, Wes?
Is that muted?
I understand you have pledges for a certain amount. Would you share with us what those pledges, not who they're from, we don't need to know that, but what the volume is, how much money you've got pledged?
Yeah, I would need to go back and check exactly where we're at, but if you...
I think he's in the $750,000 to $800,000 range was what we had when the amphitheater and the whole thing was. So, and nobody's backed up on that, taking the amphitheater out.
Are those binding pledges that if you had to go back to them, you could enforce if the city spends money? Is it binding that they have to come with their share?
I think that's, I mean, those folks are saying, "We're willing to give the money if the city is willing to put up half after we look at grant opportunities and everything." But I mean, I'm not, I haven't made them sign anything, but these are people that I take their word for, that they're good for, and so...
Will you co-sign for them so that we've got something binding so that we know?
We don't need any, that's the thing, we don't need anything binding right now. We're just, we're trying to get pricing. That's the, why bind ourselves right now? Like Councilman Vanel said, we haven't completed the work of the committee yet. We haven't been given the opportunity to take proposals and put them into a budget and then formulate a business plan. That's where my frustration is here, so...
Is he muted or not?
Do we need to vote him in since he's not on the agenda?
To answer questions, I don't think he, it's in reference to this.
He's just here to fix the volume. So, when you're ready to hear it from the attorney, then we'll fix it soon.
I want to make sure we're doing it right.
I think he can speak, he just didn't hear you. Okay. You may want to turn him up.
Mr. Halligan, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Halligan?
Yes, I can hear you.
Do you have, were you able to hear Wes's presentation?
I was able to hear the first few minutes. Unfortunately, the city's doing one top mute, so I've missed the last about five minutes of the discussion.
Do you have questions for him, and can you answer questions from him?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, Mayor, Council, and as everyone who came to this night meeting, thank you for allowing me to participate and listen and weigh in on what seems to be a very important decision for the city. To answer to the first question about public-private partnerships, I would say that P3s, that's all the tribes in the bar, are much broader than just having private investors invest into a particular project. P3s are very broad term, but a more, a broader way to look at it is, P3s allow a private partner to assume more risk and responsibility than normally they would in a typical procurement process. So, for this project, I have just learned about it just the last couple of days, so there's still much I'll need to delve the background. But at first glance, it looks like this could be a public-private partnership in a few ways. First, I did review the RFP in brief that had been previously produced, and it's a design-build RFP, and that sort of sets a great foundation for a P3 project, because the most difficult part of any project is defining the scope. And the vast majority of the work has been done already by the city, by the committee, on developing that RFP and defining what is the scope of the project and where it's sitting. The project could be able to determine, fundamentally, what is the scope of the P3, if it included private financing, because there does have to be, at the end of the day, some way to date the project. It could also be a P3 if a private partner was interested in operating the facility. So, in this case, if some entertainment company wanted to put on shows or bring in vendors to be able to offset some of the costs of the project, that would be an operations-type agreement that would also make this a public partnership. And then finally, if the city wanted to assign maintenance responsibilities to a private partner, all under one solicitation with one RFP, one agreement, with one private partner who is responsible for delivering this project, also has the main fee over the life of the number of years, let's say 20, 30 years, and all these different ways, this could potentially be a public-private partnership. But I do want to clarify that my interest is in delivering the project if the city wants. My job is not to promote P3s, and this isn't a good fit for it. I'll say there are other entities that have considered amphitheaters and pavilions for harvest markets. Previously, I've heard references to sales, who probably has an RFP to do just that. There are other entities out there that have also considered this. I will say that this type of arrangement would allow some way to monetize the asset cost, the public cost. It does seem that generally, a lot of entertainment companies do struggle to be able to use purchase prices for tickets to bill a whole evening with the cost of something like an amphitheater, although it could be done if done correctly. So, I do think that this could potentially become a P3. But at the end of the day, we would have to decide who would be the one that would pay for it. Would it be revenue generated from the pavilion, charging ticket prices, charging vendors? Would it be coming from the city budget? Would it be coming from grants? I did hear mention of the naming rights. Now, typically, to give someone a privilege or using naming rights has to go through a competitive process. At the state level, the statute is quite clear that there has to be a competitive negotiation, a competitive bidding to issue naming rights at the state level. There's a narrow exception to that. It's less clear at the local government level. But I will point out that the Constitution of Kentucky does say that any time a local government issues out a privilege to a private partner, then it has to go through a competitive process to prove it, and a public opportunity for multiple parties to be able to put into proposals. And so, I do want to clarify that if it's issued, that it would need to be at some point a competitive process for elected.
Wes, do you have questions for Mr. Halligan? Just council members?
I do have a question, and I'm not sure if this is the part of the conversation that you weren't included in, but back in April, Resolution 2498, our Strategic Planning Committee entered into an agreement with a group where they donated $15,000 to the city to help us hire a branding firm to create new logos and signage and to figure out what our community was all about. Did we do something wrong by accepting $15,000 of private money for that project?
No, I mean, something we're voting into a little bit earlier.
That wasn't any bids involved in that. That's the reason that...
But didn't they have...
Councilman Lowery, that was not any partnership with the city whatsoever. That was, were we, the foundation, contacted individuals to see if they would be interested in helping support their project. They have no benefit from it, there's no naming rights, there's nothing involved with that. The foundation worked as an entity to help with the city with the finishing of that project. So, the individuals were involved in that. We didn't go out, we asked individuals, but there was no requirement to giving or anything like that. So, it was a donation to the foundation, and then the foundation in turn is going to work with the city. But that's not anything that is connected, any strings attached or anything like that. It's strictly a donation to the foundation, and the foundation made a decision to help support the city with that.
But the donations to the foundation, those people were under the, they knew where their money was going. They knew that that was earmarked for this particular project. And I appreciate every individual who did that, and I know you've met your goal, and congratulations on that.
Yeah, we did very well with that. We had 16 businesses, individuals that gave of that, and we met the goal, and some of the individuals are in the room tonight.
That's correct. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Halligan?
Just so I know, I mean, does he have a RFP? Yes. So, Mr. Halligan, how long will it take? And I'm sure with Frost Brown, your company goes ahead of you, I don't know you, I just got this tonight. I would have loved to have called you Friday before we got our agenda, but I just met you tonight. I'd like to have the opportunity to reach out to you as a councilman later on, if that's okay, number one, or is that all right with the...
We've paid him for tonight.
Okay, but I mean, if we just got this when I sit down here, I didn't even know who he was or what he's doing. I mean, should I have the right to ask him any questions pertaining this?
Anything about the park, you can ask him now, yeah.
All right, what about after now?
Well, you should have your questions now, or we're going to have to, the council's going to have to vote whether to go with whatever y'all want to go with, and he may not be who we're dealing with after tonight.
Okay, I just think he's our expert. I figured that's who we should reach out to. I would hope I get more than 10-minute notice of meeting you, and I'm, no disrespect to you, Mr. Halligan, because I'm sure you're top shelf by your bow here. But so, our only question for you is tonight, if we have anything, but then moving forward, we'll have a new attorney. If we vote forward...
It depends on what you vote on.
Okay.
If you vote to go forward without a P3, without a P3, then we won't need, we can use another attorney to go with you.
So, there'll be some attorney that we'll reach out to?
If you vote to go forward with the process prepared, yes.
Okay. So, Mayor, he says he has the RFP, so what's his decision on that RFP? If he has it, what's his status? What's he saying about it?
Ask him.
Mr. Halligan?
Yes, sir.
You have the RFP?
I did have a draft of the RFP. I wanted to refer it to this version.
All right. So, your initial assessment of that is?
My initial assessment of the RFP is that it has a very strong scope, and it is very clearly defined what the city would be procuring and what the city would be obligated to do if it were to accept a proposal to deliver, just as was described in that document. There are a few things that would have to be inserted into the document that are required by Kentucky's procurement law.
So, would you work with Wes to do that, and what timeframe would we be talking about?
Yes, if we were to be engaged, then we wouldn't want to meet with the committee responsible for developing the RFP and evaluating proposals, and we would raise it immediately to a responsible.
I'm sorry, Joe, were you finished?
All right, so Mayor, since we've already voted to go forward so far, and right now we don't have enough information and everything's pending on this, shouldn't we just tell them to proceed on, finish this RFP, and then come back to us with something?
If you all, as the council wants to employ him to do that, I think it's perfectly fine, even though we're not voting on anything but the design-build documents.
I guess I have a question. Is your field of expertise is P3s and public-private partnerships, do we need your services to simply send out an RFP for design-build plans, or would your role as a P3 litigator come in after those bids come back and we decide if we're going to move forward with this park?
So, if we're going to move forward, we're very forget it, because what is in an RFP is a part of the strategic strategy, and of course, that we have a strategy to act that includes all of the resources of the project. And so, if the city owners know now that it orders to finance the project on its own or to branch or other funding sources, then proceeding with a design-build RFP would make a lot of sense. However, if the city were interested in pursuing private financing, potential time and naming rights, for this competitive process, pursuing operations agreements, then we certainly would want to include that in one RFP from the very beginning of the process.
If I may, Patrick, you were asking about consulting with Mr. Halligan in the future. If the council were to vote tonight to employ him to help work this out and get the RFP ready to go forward, then you could ask him questions whenever you want, because he would build the city for any questions that you ask. His role ends tonight unless the council decides they would like to continue with him. Now, if the council would like to find different counsel, you know, I picked this man because Kentucky League of Cities recommended him, and because when I looked at his background, he seemed perfect. I knew nothing about him before Friday morning. But if you'd like to look into getting somebody else, they could answer the questions, and they'd be the ones working going forward. But if you decide to hire him, he will answer your questions and work with Wes on getting the RFP, did I say that right, RFP, ready to go forward. There's minor things with that that just can't be done that way. He knows what they are. I may know, I may think I know, I may say something needs to be changed and it really is okay, and I may miss something that needs to be changed that would get us in trouble in the future by, you know, for instance, sued by a competitor who is not happy with the way we handle the process. So, we want to make sure that we're right when we do that, if we go forward.
Okay, but tonight, we're just voting to engage Mr. Halligan. We're not voting whether we want to do the RFP, we're just going to, we're voting whether this is the guy that takes us where we need to be.
You can vote for that if you want to, or you can not... You can vote for that if you want to, or you can not do anything. It's strictly what the council here wants to do.
Patrick Halligan, one last question, then. How long, if we say go tonight, how long till you give us back an answer? Yes or no? Is it a week? Is it two weeks? Is it for the RFP to be sent out?
And sir, I might not have thought that last question. If you were to say go tonight, how long until I'm able to answer which question?
Yeah, just where we could put it out as an RFP. How long from start to finish would that be? And then I'm gonna make sure that we get you a chance to bid on the naming rights, because I've got some people that want to bid against you. That was a joke, so. But how long will it take from soup to nuts to get it back to where we can put this out for bid, would you say?
Generally, it just takes a few weeks to meet with the committee, make the sign on the language to use, and get it back in front of me. If the city council wanted to vote on first before issuing it, we could go that route. But I might meet with the committee, deserve a sense of.
And Mayor, I think since we've already went through this process, as Councilman Brenner said, what we're at is, is I believe Wes said they're saving some money by just doing RFP. Sounds like, Wes, you got a little bit of money to spend. If you can spend a little bit of money and work with this lawyer, then we don't have to really say anything. This group, we've already made decisions on this whole process, and then Wes, if you step forward and step up and do this, work with this young man, y'all resolve these issues, and then bring back to us an RFP.
I don't want to, there's nothing actually to vote on.
I think we need to hire him and retain him as a city to protect the city's interest, and let him review this on behalf of the city to be sure it's legal. I don't think he needs to protect the farmer's market or the parks committee. I think who he needs to protect is the city to be sure we do it right. And so since he's protecting the city, I think the city should pay for it.
May I make one additional suggestion?
I think the farmer's market and this park and the city would be all one unit.
Wes?
We're protecting all of it.
With the money that was not spent for the committee, the $15,000, could you possibly do us an invoice for the amount that you want to be reimbursed for and dedicate the rest of that money toward this man helping you do the RFP to apply that toward his fee? Is that something feasible, or am I stepping out in the wrong direction?
I don't need to be reimbursed for anything. That's, I guess I'm getting hung up on.
Well, it's not fair for you to, if you've spent money. I don't know if you have, but what I'm saying is, we've got $15,000 on the table now. He said that he thought he could get us up to where we needed to be initially for 25. Is that 15 available from your committee to apply toward the 25?
$25,000 to get the RFP?
That's to do the R3, I mean, the P3 and everything. To do these contracts is a couple of weeks' work.
Okay.
I guess I would be, I would be okay. So you're saying that the $25,000 is after, if we get, if we procure a proposal that is acceptable to the city council as a majority and move forward, that part of that $25,000 is his services to then set up the legal framework for the project as well, for all those things? It's not $25,000 for an RFP, right?
No.
That's up to the council, then.
I think what they're saying is, you got $25,000. Get the RFP out, spend whatever you gotta spend to get that. You've got $25,000 cash. You was gonna do it for $2,000, but now we got, we'll spend the $25,000 or whatever the budget.
I don't think it'll take that much to do just the RFP. Like, that was the whole thing with the RFP, was to save the money. So I like what Councilman Trigg.
We're talking about $15,000 to get the RFPs and whatever else we need. Then at that point, that's gotta come back to the city, not to individuals.
Wes, just run with that. That's good.
If the RFP does not bind the city to anything, where is the liability if we just get the RFP?
Because it's like a bidding process, and the city is held responsible by KRS. If we're a partner in it, it's gotta come back to the city and gotta be reviewed through the city.
And this statement, it's not that I don't trust anybody sitting at this table to not be completely honest with me about things, but if we hire him, can we make a vote right here that the document he brings back, we actually send out, and we're not sitting here a month from now having the same discussion again?
That's what I would like to see. I mean, we, like I said, I mean, I gotta tip my hat, American Engineers, Sustainable Glasgow, I mean, we've spent, I don't want to invoice back. I mean, we've done all this pro bono, you know, I mean, it's just been hard work and people coming together, and so that's up to the council. I'm fine, I'm fine with, we haven't spent any money, so if part of that $15,000, we have to do that to make sure that we're good?
If it's okay, I'll just make a motion.
Can it be rate going forward? Do we stay at a discounted rate?
That's probably a good question.
Mayor Armstrong, Mayor Armstrong. Mayor Armstrong, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Jason, hearing the information you've heard and what you've seen thus far, to put a package together, RFP, how many hours do you think that would take? And could you give us a cost estimate of that?
We can work out the process, but if we need to refine that number, it's more well to be creative on what we need to do within our position the city has. So if the city were to allocate any remaining from the $15,000 towards RFPs, if there's a way to do that, we can do what we need to, to be creative on how we give you the product that you need and give you a honest assessment of our costs. I'd love to have a few assessments of this.
What I would ask Mayor Armstrong is that we have Jason and Frost Brown Todd to present that dollar amount to the committee, the Parks Committee, and let them review that. And as we mentioned, back in January of 2020, we allocated $15,000 through a resolution. And I would move, not move, I'm just to comment, no action needed, but if they get the information back from Frost Brown Todd, and it's less than $15,000, well, it'd be 13, we spent $2,000 thus far.
We have 10.
Oh, we have 10. Yeah. It could, then they have the leadway to use those funds, because we have allocated $15,000, but push that back to the committee and let the committee get the information from Frost Brown Todd and stay within that $15,000 range.
Actually, Terry, I agree with that, but I would rather Mr. Halligan give us a price of what he thinks it's gonna be, to see this from soup to nuts, and then work with Wes and Danny, the three of them. Because it shouldn't take, I mean, Mr. Halligan, could you have a surprise in the next 24, 48 hours of what's your scope of work? You've got the RFP, what it just takes to go out to bid? Is that, I mean, can you do that for us?
Yes, I can come up with a cost range for a few different pieces of those to perform. So one would be looking at the RFP and filling in the gaps that might be required by Kentucky law. There's that second issue of evaluating the naming rights and what might need to be done there. And then third would be any sort of discussions with it, and then on what different period of strategy is moving forward. So some of that, I think, or a bunch of that, so he covered by the $13,000 or so that might be remaining, but I might need to refine that number. And really, it might just all be a two-way discussion, what would the committee's hold, what would the council's hold, and then what strategies we want to proceed and move forward.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we, I'd like to make the motion that we have $15,000 allocated, that between Danny and Wes, Mr. Halligan, that they will get together on the RFP and secure the RFP back for us, that then we can take to bid pertaining to the 2.2, 2.4 acres that's in question, that's only got. That would be my motion.
I don't think we even have to vote for that, we've got the money. If y'all, if it's what you want to do, I think we can go forward, can't we?
Yeah, we'll vote on it anyway. But Eric, take a roll call.
Take a roll call vote, we got a second. We got a second.
Question on that, Mayor Armstrong. Could we amend that? I'd like to have the entire committee involved in that, not that the individuals you named, but I think it's important that the entire committee, the Parks Committee, be involved in that process.
Just out of scheduling stuff, the only reason I said there is those three, I think Wes can keep the Parks Group in line. I think Danny can get the city council. I'm just trying to expedite it, because we've already been here. I'm really getting kind of tired of seeing you here, so I'd like to see somebody else. Not Baker, but you, maybe. So I'll stay with my motion and.
First and second, roll call vote.
Can I ask, Wes, you feel good about where we are now?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, moving forward, I think, yeah, if you need somebody like that.
And just to have on record, this motion assures that when the RFP is finished, and we've spent $15,000, that it will be sent out by the city. Is that an accurate statement, Danny?
Why don't you bring it before this council for a vote and let this council vote, and if they say send it out, send it out?
We were back to my motion that.
There's no reason why we wouldn't send it out.
Why would we, why would we vote to spend $15,000 and then not be sure that we're gonna send it out? I guess that's the.
If the council votes to spend the money, all we gotta do is let the city, is bid it for postage and send it.
So Mona, you got my motion? You wanna read it so we got it?
I wish you would re-clarify so I make sure I have found what you spoke.
Okay. I want you and I to be connected here on this one. I make a motion that we spend up to $15,000 with Mr. Halligan, with Wes, and with Danny.
Is that besides, is that an additional $15,000 from the resolution?
No, that's the original $15,000 that we all voted on.
Same 15.
Same $15,000. On the 2.2, 2.4 acres that is shown on the graphics, on the information that Wes showed last time he was here, and that, as Wendell has here. Does that make? Yeah.
That's her presentation from our last meeting that I.
Right. And Wes will keep the, I don't know if this needs to be.
He will represent the committee.
The Parks and Rec, Danny will represent the city council. But there won't be any exchange other than the three of y'all. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't want you to know something Danny doesn't, and I don't want Danny to know something you don't. So, and Mr. Halligan, I'm not sure what I want you to know yet, but I'm gonna do it quick, because I can't afford you.
He will submit it, he will submit it back to.
Wes and the.
Wes, and then Wes, and Danny can review it, Danny can be put up, put out.
You got a second? Yeah.
I can commit time completely up until the 13th of July. I have to be away for a few days the 13th, but I'm good until then for any day that you need me.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Whitaker?
He must be on the right track, unanimous.
Jason, thank you so much for your patience. We appreciate you going to the sacrifice that you have to be with us. I'm available unlimited, I'm available on an unlimited basis until the 13th, and I have to be away for a few days then on a family matter. But anytime between now and then, I'm at your disposal, and I'm sure that the rest of the people, Wes, we will be, because we know the importance of this to the city and to everyone involved. So when you're available, let us know. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
I think you almost appreciate it.
Good night.
Before we go on to the old business, any of you that would like to stay, welcome to stay, any of you that would like to leave, now leave the chat. If you're not, we would love you to stay. Next item on the agenda is the Second Reading ordinance, 2021, amending ordinance 2020-2966, the City of Glasgow's annual budget.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2021-blank, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2020-2966, the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year 7/1/2020 through 6/30/2021. By appropriating from the unappropriated general fund, $109,625 for grant expenditures and equipment, and to receive $58,700 from grants and sale of property to general fund, and to appropriate from the unappropriated sanitation and landfill fund, $154,100 for grant expenditures, rent, and equipment repairs, and to receive $49,571 from grant to sanitation landfill fund. Be hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that the City of Glasgow annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, is hereby amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby received the sum of $12,900 into the general fund Parks and Recreation Department sale of properties account, 016610-6330, for the sale of surplus equipment. Section 2, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund, the sum of $3,825 to be transferred to the Parks and Recreation Construction and Maintenance Equipment Account, 016610-8515, for equipment trailer. Section 3, there is hereby received the sum of $45,800 into the general fund Parks and Recreation Department State Monies Account, 016610-6320, for the chrome rubber grant. Section 4, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund, the sum of $45,800 to be transferred to the Parks and Recreation Agricultural Supplies Account, 016610-8310, for playground mulch. Section 5, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund, the sum of $60,000 to be transferred to the Stormwater Department Construction and Maintenance Equipment Account, 014440-8515, for a mini excavator. Section 6, there is hereby received the sum of $49,571 into the Sanitation Landfill Fund Landfill State Monies Account, 045-4430-6320, for recycled brand. Section 7, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund, the sum of $49,600 to be transferred to the landfill other equipment account, 085-4430-8599, for equipment. Section 8, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund, the sum of $36,000 to be transferred to the landfill rent and storage account, 085-4430-8420, for rent of a compactor. Section 9, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund, the sum of $68,000 to be transferred to the landfill maintenance and repair account of 85-4430-8220, for repairs to two compacters and a dozer. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, First Reading, June 14th, 2021. Second Reading, June 28th, 2021. What'd I say?
$68.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Also, I think on section 8, it's 8240, not 8420.
I'm really doing good tonight. The account on section 8 was 85-4430-8240 for rent of a compactor, and on section 9, it's $68,500 to be transferred to the landfill maintenance and repair account, 085-4430-8220, for repairs to two. thirty dash eighty-two twenty for repairs to two compacters and a dozer. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests Mona Simmons City Clerk. Good job. Thank you all.
I apologize. I make a motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Lowry to accept.
Second.
Councilman Benel, being the second reading, I have a roll call vote.
Can I ask a question on the budget? I don't know if this is on this line or the next one. Is, I think I seen Stephanie come in somewhere. Is she still out there? Okay, I'm sorry. How much money has the city got bonded against it?
Zero.
Okay. I just wanna check. Thank you.
Benel?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick? Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg? Witcher?
Yes.
And now this is the second reading passes. The next ordinance, the second reading number twenty twenty-one ordinance adopting the City of Glasgow's annual budget for fiscal year seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two.
Since this was read in the public record last meeting, and it's available on the website, I move we suspend with reading all the numbers again tonight.
A second motion and a second, all those approve of not reading it in its entirety, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
We will dispense of the reading, and we'll just take a motion to accept it.
I think his motion, I would need to read the wording and just not the numbers.
Yeah.
The way his motion was.
Okay.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash blank, and ordinance adopting the City of Glasgow annual budget for fiscal year seven one twenty twenty-one through six thirty twenty twenty-two, establishing revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message is being prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council had received such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, and now therefore be it ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year seven one twenty twenty-one and ending six thirty twenty twenty-two is hereby adopted as follows. And then I have all those numbers there in the table on that ordinance. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect as of July one twenty twenty-one according to passage and publications as required by law. A copy of this information, the entire FY fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget and additional background materials are available for public inspection during normal business hours, seven thirty a.m. to four thirty p.m. local time at Glasgow City Hall, Office of the Mayor, one twenty-six East Public Square, Glasgow, Kentucky, four two one four one. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests Mona Simmons City Clerk, first reading, June fourteenth twenty twenty-one, second reading, June twenty-eighth twenty twenty-one.
Having heard the second reading, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Kirkpatrick and a second by Councilman Honeycutt, this being the second reading, can we get a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Benel?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick? Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg? Witcher?
Yes.
Motion, ordinance passes. The next item is the second reading of an ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash blank, and ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance rezoning property located at the intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way, containing three point two four seven acres more or less, from I one light industrial district to I two heavy industrial district. It appearing that, number one, Billy Carver and wife Emily Carver, owners and applicants have requested a zone change for property located at the intersection of Prestwick Drive and Hume Way, containing three point two four seven acres more or less. A schematic drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Number two, a trial-type due process hearing concerning and said proposed zoning change was held on April nineteenth twenty twenty-one at seven p.m. by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in a recommendation by the commission that the property herein after described be rezoned from I one light industrial district to I two heavy industrial district classification. Number three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the Glasgow City Council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this ordinance as exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section number one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as exhibit B, are hereby approved in all aspects. Section two, the property located at Prestwick Drive and Hume Way, Glasgow, Kentucky, containing three point two four seven acres more or less, be rezoned from I one light industrial district to I two heavy industrial district classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December thirtieth nineteen ninety-one. Section four, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law, Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk, first reading, June fourteenth twenty twenty-one, second reading, June twenty-eighth twenty twenty-one.
Madam Clerk, second reading, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion to Councilman Benel, the second, with Councilman Neal, being the second reading, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Benel?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick? Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg? Witcher?
Ordinance passes. Next item is municipal order twenty twenty-one, on order of the mayor Randy Gibbons, is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order number twenty twenty-one dash blank, on order of the mayor, Randy Gibbons is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments. This appointment is a four-year term expiring June thirty twenty twenty-five and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of June twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
I have a motion to accept this.
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris, and a second by Councilman Kirkpatrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Municipal order passes. Next item is municipal order, the mayor, Shannon Rust, is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order number twenty twenty-one dash blank, on order of the mayor, Shannon Rust is hereby reappointed to the Glasgow Board of Adjustments. This appointment is a four-year term expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty-five and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of June twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor attests Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard the municipal order, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion by Councilman Neal?
Second.
With Councilman Benel, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Municipal passes. The next item is municipal order twenty twenty-one, on order of the mayor, Sherry Myers is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, Board of Directors.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order number twenty twenty-one dash blank, on order of the mayor, Sherry Myers is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, Board of Directors. This appointment is a four-year term expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty-five and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of June twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard the municipal order, do I have a motion? Have a motion by Councilman Witcher, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Kirkpatrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Aye.
Do I have a roll call vote, just to be clarified?
Benel?
No.
Gont?
No, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
No.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Lowry?
No.
Neal?
No.
Norris?
No.
Trigg?
No.
Witcher?
Yes.
Municipal order favors. Next item is new business, is resolution authorizing resignation of the City of Glasgow as trustee of the trust created by Article five, excuse me, four of the will of J. H. Mitchell deceased.
City of Glasgow Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash blank, resolution authorizing the resignation of the City of Glasgow as trustee of the trust created by Article four of the will of J. H. Mitchell deceased, and, number two, the conveyance by the City of Glasgow as resigning trustee of all of its right, title, and interest in to the real property and improvements located at twelve fourteen South Green Street, known as the Larrabee Mitchell Clubhouse property, to T. J. Sampson Community Hospital as successor trustee, that whereas the City of Glasgow, City is currently the trustee of a trust created by Article four of the last will and testament of J. H. Mitchell deceased, whereas the City desires to resign and devolve itself of the obligations as trustee of the aforementioned trust and to convey as resigning trustee all of its right, title, and interest in to the trust property, known as the Larrabee Mitchell Clubhouse property located at twelve fourteen South Green Street, Glasgow, Kentucky, trust property to T. J. Sampson Community Hospital, who has agreed to become the successor trustee and hold the trust property in trust for the trust beneficiaries, and whereas the heirs of J. H. Mitchell, as well as the representatives of the various trust beneficiaries, have been in communication with representatives of T. J. Sampson Community Hospital, and all have expressed a desire that the trust property be conveyed for no monetary consideration to T. J. Sampson Community Hospital in trust, so that the hospital can operate and maintain the trust property as part of the hospital's overall service to the community, and so that the Larrabee Mitchell Clubhouse traditional philanthropy will continue. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Glasgow as follows. Number one, the City of Glasgow shall resign as trustee of the trust created by Article four of the last will and testament of J. H. Mitchell. Number two, the City of Glasgow as resigning trustee shall convey all of its right, title, and interest in and to the real property and improvements located at twelve fourteen South Green Street, Glasgow, Kentucky, known as the Larrabee Mitchell Clubhouse property, to T. J. Sampson Hospital as successor trustee for no monetary consideration, and hold the trust property in trust for the trust beneficiaries. Number three, Mayor Harold Armstrong Shelby, and hereby he is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to carry out the actions authorized by this resolution, including but not limited to a resignation of trustee and a deed to T. J. Sampson Community Hospital, specimen copies of which are attached here to, so adopted this twenty-eighth day of June twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion by Councilman Norris?
Second.
With Councilman Witcher? All those in favor of this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Resolution passes. You have in your documents some pending appointments. Some of them are, most of them are, I think, are reappointments. Some of them are joint with the fiscal court. Some of them are joint with the chamber. But this is your approval. They don't have the same commitment that we do. They just make the appointment, but we're gonna do our part tonight to notify you of it, then the next meeting, by that time, the other parties that are parked to this, you'll either nominate them or not, and then we'll vote on them at that meeting. Being no other business...
I can ask a question, Dave. What, what are we, have we done anything with, I know you've been working on getting the historical committee together. Has anything happened with Fort Williams? I've just had several people ask me.
We've had a couple of meetings up there.
Okay.
And we're in the process, give you an update, we're in the process of gonna get some, ask for some donations and to put the wall of the fence back up. We got the new flag, put the fence back up, a new post, and I have enough material to put the fence in, I'm gonna donate to the, to Fort Williams to do the new fencing. We just gotta come up with some posts and a lot of labor to help us put it back up.
I'm on that board also, Mayor. What we're looking at from the community when you're aware of the Zed Manship, and the amount of work that's necessary to do, we're only doing maybe one hill or a section of the wall around it. So it's gonna take a lot of time, a lot of effort, and again, he said we're asking for volunteers. We got supposed it is going to volunteer some material, but we're gonna need a lot of hands and effort to try to restore that wall to the, you know, to the state that needs to be. So bear with us if you go up on the Fourth of July or any other holiday and you're about to go there, and it seems like it's stuck, it's just a matter of being able to do what we can physically and so-called ethnomatically do in one period at a time. So it'll take a while.
And we will post on our website, on the city's website, when we get to the wall, we need hands and number of all we're doing, and our equipment, the city department, we'll punish that, and if anybody wants to donate some of the posts, I think I've got enough bowls that I'm gonna donate, I've got a solid, and I think enough bowls to go around enough one section. What do we think, one hundred fifteen feet or something, judging? Hundred fifty-nine feet. And hopefully we can have enough of those bowls that are still decent and put them on some of the other sections. There's gonna be a lot of work done up there. So we'll be posting and asking for donations and volunteers to help us put it back together.
Wes, can I ask you a question? You said you were out of town on the thirteenth. Our next meeting's the twelfth, so...
I'm staying for the meeting, then I'll leave in the next morning.
Got it. So maybe with Mr. Halygen, maybe we can hopefully get that done, if he can get that before you leave.
Anytime he's available, I'll change my schedule if I've got something before then.
Got it.
We've, we've got some family that's moved out of town.
Got it.
Different states, and we're going late so that I can be at the meeting by midnight, and then we won't be there for all of you.
Got it. Thank you.
Other announcements, Glasgow Regional Landfield, the Council of the Third Twenty Twenty-One, and the servants of Independence Day, and then Glasgow City Hall, Glasgow Park Public Works, sanitation, stretch, water transit, and landfill, with your Monday the fifth, servants of Independence Day. Have your Monday and Tuesday packages to recycle on the curbside, Tuesday, six and seven a.m. will pick up. Reminder about your car wash, your ordinance states that consumer car washs are limited to use June the twenty-eighth through July the third, twelve p.m. to ten p.m., and July the fourth, twelve p.m., eleven p.m., and July the fifth, twelve p.m. to ten p.m. Is there any other announcements before I... Our city, our next city council meeting will be Monday the twelfth, with the state here in person, the city office, the council chambers. Is there any other announcements?
Mayor, I won't be influenced by me, I'll be on vacation unless you allow me to zoom.
Do what?
I will not be at that council meeting, I will be on vacation. If you allow me to zoom, I will zoom at a time.
I think that would be acceptable if everybody...
Yeah, we'll, we'll be in the conference, speaking, having a good laugh. That's okay, because the president's zooming here.
If you ask for a, as I said, we're meeting in person, but if we're gonna be out of town and you want me to, we're out of city, that's what we could participate in. If that's okay with everybody else.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's okay.
Okay.
Wait, do you want to make this?
Is there any other announcements?
I'll make the announcement again.
Motion, second, the major board, the board line, we're coming, we'll make all the city council...